All this meeting to order. This meeting is a meeting of the West Yaga Local School District Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the West Yaga Local School District's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. I don't know why I'm having a brain issue. We do the pledge before you want me to call the roll?
Call the roll.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sherwood.
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
It's been a long day, okay? You rise for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great public for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, do you just want me to read this as it is in there? Or do you do that?
No, you can read it.
So, we're going to move on to public hearing. Public meeting on the reemployment of Richard Stopek as a custodian to commencing on July 16th, 2025, following his retirement. Does anybody, do we just ask for comments or do we have to do the?
Open it up for public comment.
Okay, so now we are open for public comments if anybody has anything to say. Okay. Call the roll, please.
No need.
No need? Oh, that's right, okay. So then, we're moving on, right? This always confuses me, this kind of thing.
I understand.
Okay.
Throws you out of the rhythm.
Any additions or changes to the agenda?
We've modified Resolution 2025-06-213 to, we've added an additional person with unpaid days.
Okay.
So, we'll need a motion to approve the adjusted agenda.
Okay, so moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and then, you're gonna do this beautiful Senate Bill 96 thing, which is not beautiful.
It is what we've got. All right, so, right now, the Senate has finalized, or not finalized, but put out their proposal for their substitute bill for House Bill 96. And so, there's some provisions in there that will impact us as a public school that we want to go through and make sure there are ways, kind of, can ask questions about and kind of just go through that. So, the first one, when we talk about, uh-oh. Uh, no. Good job. We tested this, so it's, oh, there we go. The first thing we're gonna talk about is the school funding formula. The good news is, as you know, in the House bill, they had paused the fair school funding plan. In the Senate bill, they are going to continue that and do the final phase end of the year five and six. However, as we know, they're not gonna do the base input increases. So, we're still gonna be stuck at the 2021 increase, the base cost, and not increase those. So, that'll impact, obviously, the price of, you know, the salaries for teachers, the price of supplies and goods and things like that will not be updated, but we'll see some increases there because of the continuation of the plan. The district guarantee will continue, will have the same type of leveling guarantee payments that we had since 2021. So, those will stay in place. There is additional funding. If we have enrollment growth, we would do not, but there's also additional funding for performance-based funding linked to the state report card. So, those things that we've done on the state report card will give us some additional funding. If we look at the House bill versus the Senate bill, under this, on 2026, we'd increase by about $400,000, and then in 2027, we'd increase about $600,000 from our, what we received now is about 5.2 million. So, if we look at those. How we would look at the performance-based funding, it's based upon the number of stars awarded, the performance indicators, the testing performance, the attendance, all of those things that we look at on the report card, those are kind of all melding together to give us additional funding if this goes to go through. Now, as you know, when the Senate bill has theirs, the House bill has theirs, they gotta get together in conference and move forward.
So, do they, so they give money if you have good performance?
Right.
They don't take money if a school has poor performance, do they?
That's correct. It'll just be kind of a bonus, so.
Doesn't make much sense.
It is. But if, and then, what we typically saw, what they were concerned about on the guarantee was people are losing enrollment and we're still paying, you know, they're still funding at the same level, so they were calling that phantom, you know, seats or fan, you know, so what, that's what they're trying to get at. So, with ours, with the state report card being so important and us doing well on it, that has really given us some additional funding that we would normally not have. The district cash balances, this is one thing that we talked about. The threshold of the carryover balance would be, before they start reducing those taxes, would be moving from 30% to 50%. If we do exceed over 50%, they could suspend those levies and get us down to that cash balance, so however, that would mechanically work out, and that would be with the tax budget commission. The districts can reserve funds for capital improvements, but you must use those within three years. Now, we moved money to our 070 account, thinking that we had 10 years to use that funding. So, this is in there for a three-year period. After the three years, if we have that money, it goes into the calculation for the 50% cash balance, so they'll just push that back into the balance. So, we could theoretically, you know, lose funding that way, so, by not having it, you know, exceeding that 50% mark. The boards must submit, instead of a five-year forecast, we'll be submitting a three-year forecast and budget assumptions. We already do this, we do a five-year forecast and a budget assumption, so it'll be the current year, and then we'll have three projected years. That's kind of what they're looking at, so, and.
That's to the state.
That's to the state.
Not to the county.
Not to the county, but I would think with this being in there now, it would give it a little bit more importance to the county, so we feel, because they've always said, well, after three years, it doesn't matter, so I'm thinking that's kind of where it is.
Well, the county more typically said it only counted for one year.
That is correct. When they're looking at the tax, they're looking at one year, one year only.
Does this change that?
Yeah, I was gonna say, but what, do you think it would, though, with their added responsibility here? I mean, they're giving a little more teeth to the.
They are given more teeth and then they're given more responsibility, because now they're going to be in charge of that levy cycle. So, it'll be input, they're gonna have input into our levy cycle, so.
I would think they have to look at three years, but I guess.
What do you know?
That's to be seen, and I think those are discussions. I did call Mr. Walter because we are looking at some changes in, we have a new accounting manual, and that's moving our 016, our emergency levies, into the 011 account. I want to talk to him about that and how it's gonna work and mechanically, as we look at the tax budget going forward and how we're budgeting, because it has to start July 1st. He's on vacation now, but he said he would get back with me later on, and I would think we could open up some of these other discussions to see kind of where they're falling. Property tax changes, as we noted, we were kind of doing that parallel, you know, the Senate and the House were doing that parallel, kind of, here's the budget, here's the tax reform. We're seeing a melding of that. Some things that will be, will, you know, problematic for us, let's put it that way. Emergency and substitute levies will count towards the 20 mil floor, or the two mil floor if you're on the joint location, which we're not, so the 20 mil floor. So, before, you saw the emergency levies outside the 20 mil floor, that's why we saw the big dip, and then we saw the increase in taxes. This will eliminate that issue. I don't see that changing, that's been in both of them. What has come about is the elimination of the replacement fixed fees, emergency levies and substitute levies effective January 1st, 26, 26. Now, we get $6 million through those emergency levies, so if those are now eliminated, so then replacements are eliminated, that's about 25% of our salaries and benefits.
That means we have to put a brand-new operating levy on?
Yeah.
Or collecting at today's rate?
Yes.
So, this costs the taxpayers more money.
It will cost more money, and what we'll see is you lose that rollback homestead, because it'll be a new levy.
It'll be new, and it's, and it'll be then a continuing, right?
It would be a continuing levy.
Same, okay.
So, we'd lose that 12.5%, so taxpayers would automatically get, you know, that increase on this $6 million, only on that levy. So, as we're looking at that, January 1st, 2026, you've got one election before that, November 2025, that we may have to consider, because we do have that renewal coming up for the 3.7 million, and looking at that for a substitute levy. Now, can we do that in light of this? That's still to be determined. They're looking at, our attorneys are looking at this and how we, you know, if we were to choose to do something in November, how that would be impacted by this change. Now, we're not the only people, there's like 300 or 400 school districts that have emergency levies. Now, these are fixed fee levies that collect the same amount of money that we've been collecting for 20 years, so, these are, but again, that's 25% of our salaries and benefits, so we would have significant, and again, there would be a delay. Say you passed it, you know, you didn't do anything until after 2026, you pass it in May, that thing rolls off in 2026, the emergency levies roll off in 2026, and so you've got a, you may have a little gap when, before it starts collecting the full amount.
I don't like little gaps.
Yeah. So, we will be monitoring, this is probably the one that worries us the most, I think, and has the most financial impact to all of school districts that have these emergency levies, and these are fixed fees. Substitute levies are replacing a termed fixed fee levy with a continuing, it turns it almost into a continuing levy, because, and that collects the same amount.
Is this just for schools, or is this for, like, the fire department, the, like, everybody? Anybody?
Right now, it's just for schools. But, as we look, other restrictions on the levies?
Just a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So, if we want to put something on in November?
They're looking to see how that would be impacted.
Well, I'm wondering what the dates are that we're gonna have to hit, because.
August.
Just one in August?
No, you'll have, you'll, you'll start getting those votes in August, and then you'll have to turn around and.
Okay, but we're gonna have to do something in July, then?
It's 100 days, it's 100 days before, usually hits in August.
I was just thinking, when we have, when we were looking at the bond, for instance, we had to pass something in, like, January.
Yeah, the two votes, yeah.
And then, again, in February, or whatever, to put it on in May. So, is August then the first vote that we would have to do, or that'd be the second vote? I'm just thinking.
I'll have to look, I'll have to look and make sure, because I believe it's the first vote, but they're pretty close together, so I will confirm that as we're confirming what this all means.
Of course, and this, we will find out what the real dates are and everything at the end of June.
That's correct. Their goal is to hit this by the end of June. Now, we have had a budget go past June in the past, in my 10 years, we've had that happen once, but usually, they hit that June 30th. And the Senate wants to get theirs out this week, that they, they want to have, start those discussions, so.
But we're gonna be working on a compressed time schedule to make a decision and then to get the vote.
Yes.
And then, run the campaign if we have someone run the campaign.
That is correct.
Do it, yeah, okay.
If you were to have to put something on in November.
In November, right.
Other restrictions on levies, there are no new levies. If the carryover cash balance is over 100%, you can't put a levy on. So, if you're, you know, let's say you had $10 million in the bank, and you wanted to put a levy on, and you voted at that point, and you had $10 million in the bank, it's null and void. You can't do that. There is a mandatory disclosure of fund balances in the ballot language now, so if you say, I want to have a five mil, you know, levy, you have to, in that language paragraph that we have, it now has to say our cash balance and what it would be, so that people can look at that cash balance. It doesn't have anything, it doesn't say anything compared to the expenditures that you have, it just says if you have, you know, so, let's say that you had a $10 million cash balance, but you had a $50 million of expenditures, you know, that doesn't seem like a lot, but if, you know, so, but they're, they're not requiring the expenditure line, they're just requiring the cash line.
But we could do it.
Right.
I was gonna say, but I would think we could add other language, we just have to add a minimum.
We would have to add that in some way, so all of these things are, there's a lot of discussion right now. No combined renewal and increased levies, so you can't renew one and increase, you know, another at the same time, so that's not, we typically don't do that anyway. The other one is the two-thirds board vote that's required to place a ballot, a ballot issue on the, on the ballot. So, right now, if you have five people at the meeting, it's four people have to vote, because that's 66%. If you have four people, you can have three vote yes, so it just depends on who's coming to the table on that vote. Used to, it used to be three out of five, but it will require a two-thirds vote.
So, Karen, is that dependent on the people at that particular meeting?
It's only at that particular meeting.
And not the composition of the board?
Now, again, you have two votes, so I'm not sure if you had four on one, and you only had three people show up at the other one, what would happen, so it is a, because it's a two-vote process.
I think, I mean, I already know the answer to this, but I'm gonna ask it just to make myself feel better, this has, this has zero impact on public or private schools who are receiving public funds, like, if nobody's checking how much money they're keeping in the bank.
That's correct.
Okay.
They're not, they don't report out of five.
Even though it's public money that are funding those vouchers.
They don't report a five-year forecast. We, when we report our five-year forecasts, we report our cash balances, they are not required to report a five-year forecast, or a four-year or three-year forecast, what we're now doing. And they don't have to put levies on the ballot, or they're not, you know, they don't have the ability to do that, so they don't have to report it. The property tax relief provisions, the homestead exemption has now increased, it used to be 28, they're looking to move it to 32. Income limits, if you're under 40 to 42.5, so it's not a whole lot of relief there in the homestead. Again, disabled vets are moving from 56 to 59, and then, they would do a statewide screening for exemptions and credits, so they'd do some, now you just apply and it's pretty much given to you, but they would do some screening on that, so we'd have to look at that. One thing to remember, in addition to that, you know, again, we would lose that if we do change the levies up in that continuing, don't forget, we'll lose that home, that rollback that the state is currently paying now on the $6 million. They really have a tough time with superintendents and treasurers, so this is part of House, Senate Bill 5, when it was, if you remember, that was way back when. There was a provision there that the district can't play, the retirement contributions for STRS for superintendents and SERS contributions for the treasurers, which we currently have. No other administrators are impacted, just those two that we have at the top. Takeaways, obviously, we have some uncertain funding implications that we're looking at. We've written to our senator, or we, I should say, I have written to our senators, and they're, you know, it's, it's gonna take a lot of effort. Now, there's been a lot of testimony, and been a lot of letters going, a lot of campaigns to do that, so we're hopeful. Tighter control over the district's finances and levies by the county budget commission, so you are losing a little bit of your flexibility as a local board, so you are not free to do whatever you want on the levies, they must be approved by the budget commission as well. And then, new performance-based funding may widen equity gaps that we may have in place already, so those districts that are doing well and are wealthier districts are gonna continue to do well and get more funding, whereas those are not doing as well will fall a little bit further behind.
So, so the budget commission approves a levy request, but, but within the parameters established by the bill, right? I mean, they don't have subjective.
No, 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 they won't be doing that, but they would can block it out.
Yeah.
So, in addition, we have a new House Bill 335 that was put in place by Representative Thompson. Thomas, this limits how schools can shift the inside millage and includes fixed sum levies and income taxes in the 20 mil floor, if that's something the House bill had, anyway. You know how we're, in the past, if you had a permanent improvement fund, and you moved that inside millage over to that area, you can't do that anymore, that's looking to prohibit that change. In addition to it, they're look, he is looking to stop funding the four and a half, the 4.5 mills, so to eliminate that for all local governments in levying the current inside millage, so it would be for villages, cities, any of that, but not townships. So, you know how we have the 10 mills are broken out, the inside 10 mills, and we get 4.5, and the county gets some of it now, so he's looking at eliminating all of that funding in property taxes, suggesting that we use an income tax to replace that. County budget commission to reduce current loaded levies, that's something we're seeing in both bills, that they will be able to do, and then, offer tax credits if property taxes rise faster than inflation for those at the 20 mil floor, so he's also looking at that in provisions to give those tax credits to those that are impacted by the 20 mil So, the local government, I mean, changing that, one mil for us is 1.2 million, so four and a half mills adds up, so if you have no emergency levies and we can't do the inside millage, we would lose, you know, 10 to 12 million dollars, so it's a significant changes for us. So, all bad.
Thanks for clarifying.
Well, we'd have to consider some other source of income.
Do I?
We'd have to consider some other source of income, an income tax.
An income tax would.
A local income tax.
Would be, we're, we would have to look at, and to replace those, that four and a half, 4.5 mills.
Correct.
The county has a sales tax, and they could do something with that, but there would be a local income tax to look at that. Next steps, Senate's gonna finalize their bill by June 13th, so Friday the 13th, we'll know kind of where they're at. Encourage outreach to the state senators, monitor changes and impact to our district, and can contact education associations for their support. I know OEA's already been out talking with the senators and lobbying as well. We've been with the Alliance Group, we work with them, that they've been lobbying, they've done a lot of their testimony, you've seen that, I've sent a lot of information out to the board, so just keeping you up to date, and as we go along, it's, it's, this has been, you know, we talked about it looking a little bit like COVID, I think it's a little, you know, it's obviously worse than COVID, because it's, the uncertainty on the funding is tremendous for us and very impactful, so we will monitor it and keep advocating with our local representatives, but it is not always in our hands right now.
Okay. That's it. Okay. All right. Well, that's depressing.
It was depressing in the, in the calls I've had, too.
Okay. All right, so we're done with that, we're moving on to public remarks, and there are none, so we can move on to routine items.
Yes, if we can look at routine items, that would be Resolution 06-199.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution 201 to approve the fund-to-fund transfer fiscal year 2025.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution 201 to approve the fund-to-fund transfer fiscal year 2025.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, the transfer to food services at the end of the year, if there are any senior balances that haven't been paid, the general fund has to cover those, so we're down to $401 out of the senior, so.
That doesn't seem too bad, considering.
We have been working very hard. Ellen has done a tremendous job in working with the families and getting payment plans and getting those things started early this year, we'll continue that going into next year.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Resolution 202, authorizing the correction of the transfer amount to the Resolution 205-05-155 from the first capital projects in 070.
So move.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, this is, we had, originally had 4.75, we had made a transfer in April, so I wanted to make sure that we, I didn't count that one, so we're adjusting that down, I've already talked to the county board, we've already modified the appropriations for that.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 203 to approve student activity statement of purpose and budget for the 2025-2026 school year.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution 204 is to approve certified stipends for work outside of the 2024-2025 contractual year.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Resolution 205 is to approve 2025 summer programming stipend.
So move.
Second. And any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 206 is to approve a change in certified contract, certified salary movement for the 2025-2026 school year.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Oh, I just noticed something. For Madeline Brown, Braun?
Braun, mm-hmm, yeah.
Says from BS plus 150 to BS plus 15.
Correct, so that she had a BS, 150 undergraduate hours, so now she's moving to a BS plus 15 graduate hours.
Okay.
I saw the same thing when we went over, I wanted to make that make sense, and then it took me like two times around before, I was like, oh, I get that.
Resolution 207 is to approve certified staff appointments for the 2025-2026 school year, and I'm sure that those names will look familiar to the board.
So moved?
Second.
Okay. I'd just like to say, welcome back officially, Kristi, I'm very excited for you.
Thank you.
Kristi, for those of you that might not know, for those of you watching, as a resident here, so it's always really good to bring someone home, so I'm super happy to be bringing you home.
Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Kristi, I'd like to thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Resolution 208 is to approve certified stipends for work outside of the 2025-2026 contractual year.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
Seen a lot of stuff about the bees today.
We're, we're cleaning up the bees tonight.
Super excited about the bees, I like this little project. Call the roll, please. Oops, sorry, Dr. Beers.
Are they gonna be selling the honey?
Yes.
That's part of the plan, long-term, yes.
Yeah, 'cause I thought I saw that in part of the write-up, but I didn't see it in the statement of purpose or whatever, that there was income.
We're waiting to see how much that's gonna be.
Okay.
They're a little hesitant.
Here's your little, little jar of honey.
Um, they feel that they have wax, they're gonna be able to get the wax out to do that, so they'll plan on selling that. And then, um, perhaps selling it in our new cafe, three oh six, and instead of doing it online. So they, they planted new tables and all that as soon as they get their first, uh, harvest, I don't know if that's what it is, uh, June. So it's getting, that's their first harvest will be in June.
Very exciting.
We are unsure how much honey we'll produce. So they're called the West G bees.
And rightly so, what else would you call them?
The Bee Club, that's what it says in this one.
I, well, they've added to it, West G bees.
Okay.
Okay. Call the roll please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution two oh nine is to approve the appointment of a confidential administrative assistant.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is this, is this a new position?
No, it's, uh, Suvar Shah is retiring, so it's her replacement, and she would be here tonight, but she's on vacation, so she'll start after she gets back from vacation, so.
Okay. Call the roll please.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution two ten is to accept classified staff resignations.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Resolution two eleven is to approve summer routes for extended school year services.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution two twelve is to approve unpaid days for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Call the roll please.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution two thirteen is to approve casual laborers for the summer twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
What are casual laborers?
People that work on the grounds, et cetera, that help us with custodial type services. And yes, laborer is spelled correctly, I did not think it was because I thought the U was unnecessary, but Karen and I looked it up today and laborer singular is L A B O R E R, laborers plural is L A B O U R E R S, I did not know that.
This is why people don't enjoy English.
I would anticipate that you would have noticed that as well, so.
I'm like, we're getting fancy here, this is British right there.
That's what I said, I said, I thought it was probably, 'cause I went into, I said, what are we, laborers? I said, is this a British pronunciation, British pronunciation or spelling? We looked it up and sure enough.
This is what Jeff says all the time, that's why people hate it, can't make it make sense.
I presume that Dr. Ben and Casa knew that, of course.
We didn't ask her, we don't ask her those kinds of questions.
We don't ask her.
So they'll be working on the grounds and, um, we have computers, they have the, we've brought in all the teachers' computers, so they'll be doing some of that as well, so.
Yeah, call the roll please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Resolution two fourteen is to approve supplemental contracts, I think there's only one in there though, as I'm looking at it, for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution two fifteen is also a resolution to approve supplemental contracts, this is for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is a partial list, we'll have the remaining list on the next, as they come through.
This is quite a few for now.
One big group and then we'll have another group, yeah.
Okay, call the roll please.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Bless you.
Okay, moving on to business resolutions. Resolution two sixteen is to approve the school program contract between West Jaga Local Schools and Two Foundation Incorporated for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year.
So moved.
Second.
Excuse me, any discussion?
Is this, uh, is this just a renewal?
Yes.
We have it every year, this is for placement of some of our special needs students.
Call the roll please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Resolution two seventeen is to approve the student service agreement between West Jaga Local Schools and Reeducation Services Incorporated for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Again, this is for specific students, correct?
Correct.
Call the roll please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution two eighteen is to approve the memorandum of understanding between Ravenwood Health and West Jaga Local Schools for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
And this is more general support as opposed to a specific student?
It's for mental health services as needed.
Yeah.
And this is also supported through a portion of our foundation payment, must be spent on these things, so it's using those fundings.
Call the roll please.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution two nineteen is to approve the preventive service and maintenance agreement between West Jaga Local Schools and Comfort Systems USA.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Have we been with them, uh, recently, past years, or is this a new company?
I'm familiar with them, but I don't think from here necessarily.
This is new?
Yeah.
They're a new vendor?
Okay.
We used Go Green before.
I'm sorry, what, Mark?
Uh, call the roll please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Resolution two twenty is to approve the quote to purchase Teach Town for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just what is it?
They're remedial materials for students.
Call the roll please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Twenty, Resolution twenty-one is to approve the purchase of buses in the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Uh, the only question I had was, at one time we had talked about, we had gathered information from the bus drivers on safety, equipment they wanted. Do these come equipped with that kinda, the stuff they asked for?
Some things, there are some things we have to add, that extra lighting that's going with, um, when everything, the stop signs open, but there's also extra lighting when they stop, just to take care of.
Right. So.
It's not everything, I, I don't have an extensive list, but I can get that from the janitors.
I'm just curious. Yeah, I was gonna say, but we're still looking at adding some of that for next year.
The grant is under, under the Senate bill has been removed.
Oh, it was removed.
Yeah, so it's in the governor's budget, so we're looking to see, um, the impact going forward.
Okay.
What the cost is.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Call the roll please.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution two twenty-two is to approve the settlement agreement and release.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Resolution two twenty-three is to approve the certification of the twenty twenty-five West Jaga High School seniors.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? It was a lovely graduation ceremony.
Thank you.
They did, nice work on it.
Credit goes to Ryan and to the teachers who helped with that. Who were the ones in particular, that, it was Stephanie and Chelsea, correct? Yes.
Awesome, okay. Call the roll please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution two twenty-four is to approve the memorandum of understanding between the West Jaga Local School District Board of Education and the Ohio Association of Public School Employees, OPSI Local two fifty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll please.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution two twenty-five is approving the, the rank of the top firm that responded to the district's request for qualifications for criteria, engineer architect services for the development, design, and construction of a water treatment facility, maintenance building, and authorizing the treasurer to enter into contract negotiations with this firm.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, I, I do, you probably knew I would, um, because we haven't really approved the maintenance building.
Right, the bid package went out with the maintenance building included, so this is that criteria. So they'll, they're gonna come have that design, and then, then you would go forward with a bid package for whatever you want to do. So it would be a modification to this, or it would continue on with, um, something. So it's, it's, you still are in that planning mode, uh, to prepare the documents for that, but they're gonna have to come back with, to the board. So this is just selecting the company that will be doing that work for you.
Do, do we have any timeframe about how long it's gonna take for them to put this together?
Should be, um, we're looking at six weeks to look through our existing documents, talk through our, you know, the things that we talked about, and we're with Dave Peterson, the EPA, all that stuff, we have to get it down so we can talk through that, we, we're kind of ahead of the game when it comes to that, so that's good, but we're looking at six weeks, that's when we would like to have this all completed.
Cause, cause I'm gonna wanna know a lot more about
Yes.
the financial situation before I would approve something like that.
And so we'll see those options, you know, we talked about those options before, so we wanna get the cost associated with those options, and then talk through if that's even, you know, what the plan is.
Right.
In case there's an option for.
Good.
Call the roll please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Oh, this is me. Um, all right, so we are moving into discussion of old business and suggestions to be included on the future agenda, do we have any old business that we need to return to?
No, um, you push that off to one, you know, the vouchers heard in Ohio to the next meeting, on the June twenty-third meeting.
Right.
So it's really just the library lease and the implications for the water treatment, the well and the water treatment center.
Okay. Um, okay, superintendent report?
Well, as Mrs. Sherwood already said, graduation was very successful, and thanks to Chelsea Talty and Stephanie Myers and Mr. Patty and Ms. Moschberger, uh, we had a very good, uh, ceremony. I thank the board for being there, I think it means a lot to the kids to have us there. The ceremony went very well, um, positive comments have come into people related to that ceremony, so I appreciate it. It wasn't Ms. Moschberger, actually, it was Carrie Dorkel, I'm sorry. I gave credit where credit wasn't due, you did nothing, Julie. Carrie, we're glad you're back.
She was there.
I'm used to her being up there. Anyway, got the wrong assistant principal there, I apologize. Obviously, we have some projects underway this summer, the middle school roof project is underway now, if any of you have gone past the football field, you've seen that the covering of the field is off and the artificial turf is being replaced. Um, and then obviously the, the well project, uh, continues through the summer. And our staffing, um, is really nearly complete, we're looking at maybe three positions open right now, I believe, last count. So, um, our administrative staff is up to full speed for next year, and most of the teachers needed have been hired, so, uh, hats off, and a lot of the credit goes to those who've been interviewing them. I commit on the second round of interviews, I get a reprieve when it comes to the first round, so I have been doing just a fraction of the interviewing that, uh, Dr. Ben and Casa and, and some of the others have been, have been working on the principals, Megan Bellin and Amy Davis in particular have been very, very busy. So hats off to them, and I, I, you know, I'm looking at the candidates we're bringing in next year, and I can tell you, you're, you're getting some really top-notch people, you're getting some really good people. Um, it's interesting to, uh, to note the, the change in, uh, candidate pools since our rankings have gone as high in the state as they have. It has really opened the door for us to attract people from districts who previously might not have considered West G and who now are, are looking at it. And I think a lot of the credit for that is not just the reputation of the district and our students, but it's also the quality of the administrative team that will be in place next year, that means a lot. Um, they are anxious to join that team, so that's a good thing, so credit to you, um, as the board for making sure that that happened, appreciate it.
Any board reports? Okay. We are going to be, um, moving into, adjourned into executive session, um, all of it? Super, okay. Um, whereas the West Jaga Local School District Board of Education is committed to conducting its business in compliance with the Ohio Open Meetings Act, set, is set forth in the Ohio Revised Code Section one twenty-one point twenty-two, and whereas Ohio Revised Code Section one twenty-one point two-two G one permits a public body to enter into executive session to consider the compensation of a public employee or official, and whereas Ohio Revised Code Section one twenty-one point two-two G six permits a public body to enter into executive session to discuss specialized details of security arrangements and emergency response protocols if disclosure could reasonably be expected to jeopardize the security of the public body or public office. Now therefore be it resolved by the West Jaga Local School District Board of Education that it shall enter into executive session to consider the compensation of public employees and to discuss specialized details of security arrangements and emergency response protocols as permitted under Ohio Revised Code Sections one twenty-one point two-two G one and one twenty-one point two-two G six. And I will invite Dr. Mark Ward, Mrs. Pavlet, and Dr. Ben and Casa.
Will there be any action after?
It's an excellent question, Mrs. Claypool. No, there's no action taken at the end of this. Call the roll please.
No motion.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Yes.
Are we ready? Okay. All right, so we are reconvening into regular session at 8:39 PM. Our next board meeting is a regular board meeting on Monday, June 23rd, 2025 at 7:00 PM here in the Board Office Community Room. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.